Good morning, everyone. Going to go ahead and call a special meeting to order. See if we can please stand for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the Mexico State flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And so we hope that we're cast among a nation of our God. We will be remembered in this town. And so will the flag of the state of Mexico. As we send our country's flag to the nation of Mexico.
The next meeting on the agenda here is approval of a special meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the special meeting agenda.
Okay. Well, it's second, okay. Any discussion? See all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next portion of this special meeting is going to be public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an argument or debt may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for talk of tempo? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda here, consideration of either regional medical center or trustee applicants.
Mr. Chair, do you have to say something? Before the motions are made, I just wanted to thank the eleven individuals who put in for the board of trustee position. It's very encouraging that so many qualified folks would step up and put their name in. Really encouraging. History was two or three or even on occasion maybe one applicant. And so I just wanted to say that. And then... Yeah, does someone want to explain that?
Yeah, I can explain. Okay. So, just an explanation is how we got there, we had eleven candidates or applicants that were interested in applying for the board of trustees for either regional. So what was decided in an earlier meeting was that each commissioner would rank the applicants from one through eleven. At that point, the information would be turned in to the executive adminis...
Assistant.
Executive assistant. I want to get the assistant or the other part confused. And they were tallied, which at that point gave us a candidate's total, you know, order of how they received points and giving us a final ranking out of the candidates. Anybody have anything to add to that?
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the top six candidates as ranked by the commission.
I'll second. Oh, go next, right. I'll second.
Yeah.
I wonder if I could somehow get that list.
I was going to read it, is that good enough, Harry?
Yeah, that was it, thanks.
Yep. Wow, you are a super speaker today.
Way from above, there is.
Right. The six candidates are Cynthia Moreno, James Marshall, Dr. Jameski, Gail Standler, Dr. Donald, Donald Steiner, and Raymond Geller.
Okay, so we have a...
Is that the order in which they finish the tally?
Yes, it is. Do you want me to read it again, Harry?
Nope, I got it, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Edwards to accept the candidates in the order Cynthia Moreno, James Marshall, Dr. Jameski, Gail Standler, Dr. Donald Steiner, and Raymond Geller. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Billings, any discussion?
The only thing I have to, the only thing I have to say, if you look at six and seven, same number of points. Does that have anything to do with it, in the rankings?
Oh, yeah, why is that? I didn't even notice that.
So we should, I think we should introduce seven then.
I agree. So can we mark my...
So for the, for the record, thank you, I'm here. Commissioner Salas. So for the record, the tie vote for, there were tie votes for position number six and seven, and the seventh person on the list is Joel Schrempf. So I will amend my motion to accept the top seven candidates due to the tie. Cynthia Moreno, James Marshall, Dr. Jameski, Gail Standler, Dr. Donald Steiner, Raymond Geller, and Joel Schrempf.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Billings, any discussion? You know, I want to thank everybody that submitted their applications. This was not an easy task, ranking everyone. Very good candidates on this list, and I do want to thank everyone for applying for them. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, Mr. Chair, I move that we...
So do we have any commissioner, Commissioner Salas, anything else to say?
No.
Commissioner Bunn?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bunn?
Uh, if you're willing, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, second.
Ah, sorry. Commissioner Edwards. Okay, no one report for me?
Mr. Chair, I move to read your agenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Billings, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, special meeting agenda.
I'm waiting till nine thirty to resume with the work session.
Yeah, no, we're just going to move right along.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so we're gonna, we adjourned the special meeting, now we're gonna go ahead and call to order the work session. Let's go to county reports. I think we can go down to item three, approval of the work session agenda.
So.
Say.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favors?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Going down to county reports.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Edwards, I see your report, reporting very quickly the work session. Any questions? If we want to add to your...
And field questions, my report. So any questions from commissioners?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Salas?
Thank you.
Commissioner Salas?
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Just real quick, the construction continues for Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department Edition. Rosedale Road, Colonia's project, the road department has been working diligently to get everything ready for Southwest Concrete to start the paving on that project. Administration roof project, they mobilized yesterday, so we're going to start hearing noise up on the roof here. Should last about a month on that. Terminal renovations out at the airport, we're working through the bid process. I think I told you guys last meeting that we do have a tight timeline, so we're working that quickly for the FAA grant. So we should have the bid finalized by next, well, I think by the August meeting is when we should have the bids for you to accept. Tyrone ADA, it's actually on this agenda to approve the resolution for the grant loan agreement. That is a Colonia's project also. That one, we are already working on the bid process, so we should have the bids complete by the time we actually close that loan. We want to get construction moving in the fall. We don't want to have the winter mess up getting that project completed. Airport Road Design is moving along. They have the Geotech scheduled for either Wednesday or Thursday of this week. What they'll do is they'll punch some holes in the existing roadway to see what base they have underneath as they work through the plan for Airport Road. They just need to know what we've kind of got underneath that existing roadway. ICIP, some additional items were added from staff recommendations, and as soon as we're complete staff again from vacations, we look to prioritize that and present to the commission either later this month or the first meeting in August. New Mexico Environment Department EPA grant of fourteen thousand dollars for the former detention center project. The New Mexico Environment Department has reached out to Moises, he is the architect for UNM that was there at their public input meeting, and they're trying to set up a meeting in the next couple of weeks for us to understand the project goals and expectations, if and how those goals would fit into his curriculum, because he's the school of architecture for the spring semester. Any costs related to that and how they can transfer the money to him and any other issues or concerns. And this is so we can utilize the school of architecture for giving us some renderings of potential projects. I think the main one that's coming out of it is still that judicial, but I haven't seen everything finalized from a KSU tab, so. And then the, what's that?
I said, Misha. I have a couple of clarify questions on that.
Okay.
So the public meeting and that, all of that was phase one, right?
That was part of the end of phase one, so we can move into phase two.
And so this part of it is phase two, correct?
Yes, and there should be some funding available. I'll clarify that through the meeting, because we need to have the phase two environmental assessment done, which is actually the sampling of those items that were identified during the phase one environmental assessment.
So the phase two will include that and the work with Moises and the UNM Architecture School?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the last item I have on here is the County Wildfire Protection Plan. We received a fifteen thousand dollar grant on that. Randy and I have already met with SWCA on the scope to update that plan. The total time on project should take about nine months. We hope to convene the initial team from the original plan, and there will be some, there will be at least one public input meeting and then a draft plan for review within that nine-month period. That's my report. I did get one report from Chief Groves, and this is just information that he submitted to county manager about the fire activity during the Fourth of July. And aside from the one that was in the paper, he said that the PAVO Fire Department had a fire on the morning of the Fourth at approximately one and a half acres. Another grass fire in Hurley that was about an acre on the night of the Fourth. Those were the biggest fires outside of the forest. Most of the departments had some activity with things picking up on the night of the Fourth, but the fires that he responded to or was made aware of stayed small and were extinguished quickly. So just wanted to pass on that report from Chief Groves. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one real quick, one other question. If I can, I received an email on the roadside, probably needs to be replaced or something. Sorry, I gave it with you after the meeting.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Commissioner, I spoke to Lorraine also, some of the evaluation stuff, if you can deal with her about that.
Not a problem, so he's talking about our CAPs, our certifications, and I guess on the next commissioner's meeting, as I mentioned, my report for the commissioners, and then we will talk about the CAPs, all right? Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Where do we spend with the time, Misha, on that bill, whatever, whether we're going to do for that country?
Right. I know that Jason reached out to a couple of contractors. I think Deming had so much activity going on that they weren't even interested in talking to him about it, but I don't know the status of his bid information from Southwest Concrete. I can look into that for you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, all the members, I know I have to talk to you, Sheriff, Chris. We actually spoke about the big tournament that's going to be coming up in August first, and it's actually the Boomer's Tournament. Bobby Ruiz and Bill French are actually putting it together. We're looking at about twenty-six to twenty-eight teams. And I know we talked about trying to get it there at Baton Park. However, when they sent out the flyers, they're going to have it in Scott Park, but we're going to gear up for another tournament down the road, so I thought I'd let you know. Okay?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Just as another topic, I know that the Co-Ray Schools always does their cross-country meet out at Baton Park, and they usually coordinate with us on that and the Forest Service. And my wife is the coach for Silver High's cross-country, and she is also working with the Forest Service and will be contacting us about doing the Silver's meet out there also. So just be aware of that.
Okay. On the ICIP, when are we going to see that updated?
I am hoping to have it to you by next commission meeting this month. That's, because we've got pretty much everything on it, we just need to put the prioritized list so that you have something to look at, and then you can decide if you agree with that prioritized list or not.
And on the roof, are you, I've asked this question, what precautions are taken during the monsoon season to start up the roof at such a time?
So I need to get some additional information from Jason on that, but I did speak with the, with one of the contract workers yesterday, and, you know, informed him that we are starting our monsoon season. He said that they do, they do have a plan of when the removal of the existing roof and the laydown of what they need to have, where it's a complete changeover will be done in one day. That's their plan. He did say it's a very large roof, so I'm waiting to see how...
So are they doing that in sections or in one piece?
I, I'll get some clarification on that, yeah.
We want to meet in some of you guys.
Well, that's exactly right. And I also tell them that we already have some existing leaks, you know, that are there, so the sooner that we can get this replaced before the rains really start hitting, the better.
Okay. Thanks, I follow.
Commissioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is that me a different chair? Uh, going on to the next item of the agenda, purpose of public input. The general purpose of the work session is to inform the county board of commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for department agents and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regards to matters in respective departments. In accordance with county resolution number R-19-01, we welcome public input limited to agenda items only and will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Do we have anyone for public input? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item, this is presentation and reports, and report by the regional medical center. It's time.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I hope everyone is having a wonderful day. It's beautiful outside. I suggest we all play football today. I want to first of all introduce our new chief nursing officer. This is Rose Lopez. Rose?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rose Lopez. I lead the U C N O Healer Regional Medical Center. It is an honor to be part of this meeting and to be the CNO or the chief nursing officer of the hospital. My goal is to provide evidence-based practice for all the nurses in Healer Region, so we can provide the utmost quality of care for all the humanity in the county. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you all for the work.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Thank you. Just to start off with, I would really like to let you know that we have chosen, our board of trustees have chosen a new executive committee, and that will be Tony Correio will be the chair, Dr. Machuco, vice chair, and Jeannie Moreno, Jeannie Miller, who will be our secretary. And I would really like to take this opportunity to thank Mike Maronis for all of his work during this last year for our board of trustees. Mike, will you come up? Please? Now, would you come up, please? Just a parting word?
Well, Commissioners, staff, it's been, it's been an honor working with the, with the hospital. It's, you know, it's been probably the most difficult adventure I've had. And of course, there's been lots of up and downs, and I'm very proud that it's still a county-owned hospital, that we still get to, as a, as a community, look towards its future and run that. I appreciate everything that you all have done and look forward to the new trustees that you appoint in the, during this month. And thank you all for everything that you've done in support in of our hospital. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing I would like to just kind of share with you, if I may approach, is that all right? Thank you. Thank you. I, as promised, I wanted to bring our flyer for our opening at our new family medicine clinic in Deming. The place that we have selected is large enough to not only have family practitioners there, but also specialists who will go there and visit patients there and bring them back for procedures here at our hospital. So the opening will be July fifteenth at eleven o'clock in Deming at our clinic site, and we're hoping that some or all of you would be able to join us for this grand opening. I think it's going to be a very nice ribbon cutting, and we hope to see some of you there who are interested. Besides that, you know, I, I think the most important thing that I want to share with you, you know, we have activities going on in our hospital all the time, and we have requested, asked, urged any of the commissioners to please participate in our board meetings, to come and see what's going on in the hospital. I think that to really have a great understanding of it is to be involved in this, and more than just from afar, and more than just hearing what you hear, but to come and see for yourself. I have not seen a commissioner there in a very long time, and I really would encourage you to do this. One of the commissioners said at the last work session, and I was very impressed with this comment, he said, "I need further discussion before making up my mind, because the hospital is too important to this community for me just to make up my mind and make a decision without truly understanding the candidates." And I want you to know, sir, that I really appreciate that. When we're talking about putting the board of trustees, I can only tell you that this is one of the most important decisions that this group will make. It has not has to do with, you know, who's going to be my boss, because that is a, that's a reality in my world, and I'm very careful who I work for. So I like to think that I work for more than just the board of trustees, but that I work for the good of this community. And that's what gets me through many of the hardships of our hospital, and the ups and downs, as Mike mentioned, in healthcare, is that I understand that the purpose of what I do is more than just a building, it's more than just the people who work there, it's the people who live in this community. So it's a very important decision that you have to make, and I am a little concerned that no one has asked us, Richard and I, what we think of the candidates. Nobody has asked, are there any underlying things that we should know about? Are there things going on that we should know about? So we will be glad to discuss that at any time with any one of you before you make this very, very important decision. So that's what I have to say about that. So do you have any questions before I turn this over to Richard?
Thank you. Well, not a question, a request. If you would email your board meetings, and you can find my email on the kind of website, that way maybe I can make that point.
We certainly will, and it's usually the last Friday, it is, the last Friday of every month at noon. And they're moving now from our board room to our conference room, because it's a bigger venue, and our new chair has decided that he wants it there to allow more people to participate in that meeting. So I certainly email all of you so that you can come, and I do appreciate that. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
You know, um, just to talk to you, I'm always open to meetings. I mean, and I don't think it's a sole responsibility of just being reached out to you all, but I think you guys can reach out to us also if you have concerns or want to give us any type of input. I can tell you, one of the reasons that we had the meeting set up for July eighteenth is because of that, so you're more than welcome to come to that. The other part, that is, you know, you can always get ahold of me if you're making an appointment, and sit down and listen to your concerns, because I agree, this is, to me, this is a community hospital. It's precious to this community, and the decisions that we make as far as the board of trustees are very important decisions. You know, looking at what the board of commissioners has approved, and Tom said, you know, we only, I believe, had two or three people that actually reached out that wanted to be on this board, so there's some sense of responsibility there too on their part. But once again, July eighteenth or even before that, if you guys want to, just reach out, and we can set up an appointment, and then we can talk about any concerns and issues with, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not speaking for the other commissioners, I'm speaking for myself as far as any of you want.
Thank you so much, and we will take your love and love as well.
So one of the things that we talked about in the last meeting when we made the decision to hold the meeting in the evening on July eighteenth was, we talked about extensively about how important this decision was and the transparency of it. And so I think it's really important for the conversations about questions and concerns that happen in the public realm. And so I just want to reiterate that if you have concerns or thoughts or whatever about the potential candidates, that you come to the meeting on July eighteenth and talk to us about that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that suggestion. So I'm going to turn it over now to Richard to discuss some of the high-level of our finances.
Okay, good morning.
Morning.
Morning. I, this is, I, some of you may know, probably not, and that's okay. But I've been out of town for the past two weeks, and let me tell you, when I landed in Orlando, Florida, and I had to walk from up here to about the middle of the parking lot, and, you know, and there wasn't a piece of dry clothes on me, I was like, you know, New Mexico has, has made me soft as it relates to living in humidity. So, but I made, it took me two days to realize that I was going to make it, and I did, and I'm glad to be back. I'm glad to be back. So, I was at a National Healthcare Financial Management Association meeting in Orlando, which was the first one I've been to in a little while. You know, the theme of the meeting was to be bold, be bold in healthcare. You know, I met with a lot of hospitals across the United States. I actually sat at a table with a lady from the Mayo Clinic out of Jacksonville, Florida. And we were talking about the struggles that we have in rural New Mexico and she was telling me, you know, the troubles they have at Mayo Clinic across their network. And you know what? They're the same. They're the same problems. We're all held to the same standard, whether you're a 25-bed hospital in New Mexico or you're a multi-hospital system. We, meaning the rural hospitals, are held to the same standard as the Mayo Clinic. And so, that's something I just wanted to point out to you. The other thing that I thought was very important in the meeting was the failure of leadership in healthcare is directly tied to the underperformance of some hospitals and health systems across the United States. You know, leadership isn't just, you know, showing up every day. Leadership is about making the hard choices, the hard decisions, the decisions people don't understand that you make but have to be making for the betterment of the organization and for the betterment of the community, even though it's not apparent at the time. True leaders make those type decisions and they're often unappreciated. But anyway, so it was a great meeting. It reminded me of a lot of things that I'd forgotten. So, I'm glad to be back. It's my second day. So, I'm going to go over the financial report for May, which is our 11th month. So, for the month of May, we made $96,000 profit. That brings our year-to-date to $181,000. From an EBIT or cash flow perspective, we spun off $2.77 million this year. If you noticed, last year, we had spun off right at $5 million and that was after about a $5 million infusion from the Safety Net Care Pool, which as we all know, is not going to happen this year. But anyway, so we're still making progress, still showing a profit. A couple of other notes of interest, our cash collections percentage for May was at 32%. Our cash net revenue collection was at 123%. So, we're continuing to collect in excess of our previous month's net revenue. Couple of announcements that I believe we have a, we do have a new system controller, Jennifer Klotz. She started about three weeks ago. And she comes to us from a hospital in West Virginia, a very nice, very knowledgeable, very eager young lady. Her and her family have purchased a home in Silver City and plan on making this their home for quite a while. We do have a new Patient Financial Services Director. She started about two weeks ago. Her name is Wanda Charnock. Wanda, she's like me, she's been around for a little while and she has in excess of 20 years' experience running hospital business offices. So, we're very, very fortunate to have both of these ladies. They come with a world of experience. They know how things are supposed to run, they know what it should look like. And so, we are rounding out our talent pool in the financial services area very nicely. You notice also under notes of interest, we're doing a 100% balance sheet account review and so we are going through each balance sheet account, making sure that we understand the balances in there, the balances are supported by documentation and we're getting ready for this year's audit. We're continuing our income statement review and that's been going on, actually, both of these projects have been going on for about a year now. However, with the addition of Wanda and Jennifer, I expect these projects to pick up some speed. And, you know, it sounds simple but it's very complex, making sure the information flows through the information system correctly. So, we're mapping all of those processes out now. There has been some movement at the state level on the Safety Net Care Pool. I have not heard any formal word, but there seems to be a compromise in development in Santa Fe. So, we hope that will, hope to have a good report for you or a report for you at your next meeting related to that. The Board did last month approve the updated charity care policy and that is, that was critical to have done before the end of this fiscal year because it will impact our Medicare Form S-10, which the New Mexico is transitioning to in their fiscal year 2020. So, my understanding is currently that it's going to be a blended or a phased approach to how uncompensated care is reimbursed in New Mexico utilizing the S-10 format. So, we know it's going to be impacted in 2020. By 2023, it will be completely driven by S-10 is the best available information I have today. So, it's critical that we take a look at how we complete that form for fiscal year 19 because that will be the base year that they'll use starting next year. So, we're working very hard on trying to anticipate upcoming reimbursement changes and maximizing our opportunities there. We did commission a formal study for rural health clinic designation. We received the preliminary draft Friday. We're in the process of reviewing that draft. The results look promising. It's going to take some work and it's going to take some money. The return on the breakeven is about three months. So, we're looking very hard at moving forward with that process. We've also initiated a critical access formal study, not just the very 30,000-foot level but down to the ground level evaluation to help us decide, help the board decide whether that's the proper move to make. So, we've been very busy. So, that's my report. Any questions?
I have a comment just. So, last year, I think it's April, you all met with the Commission and you presented your comprehensive financial plan. I have that in front of me, I just have it on the page. And I just want to point out that at that time, GRMC had shown a loss of $18.3 million over the previous six years from 2013 to 2018. And of course, at that time, 2018 was projected. So, that was, GRMC was taking a significant nosedive at that time. So, it doesn't look like, as you said, $91,000 profit last month and was $181,000 years to date. Doesn't sound like much of a profit, but it's a lot better than the average of $3.4 million loss that GRMC was experiencing in the six years prior. And I just needed to point that out in favor of what you've been doing up there. And then, maybe now would be the time for me to thank Mr. Maronis for his service on the Board of Trustees. I know we had several conversations back when I was Chair of this Board and Mike thought that was more onerous on his time and I think he was being honest than when he was Mayor of Silver City. So, we respect and appreciate the citizens who are willing to step up and put in that much time to be on the Board of Trustees. I saw one of the, I was receiving a medical treatment last month and I saw one, I heard one of the trustees, he dropped the curtain, he was sitting down checking things out in the infusion center and just asking some questions. It takes a lot of time to be a good trustee, so I want to thank the office, Jeannie Miller, thank her for her service and all of the trustees. That's all.
You know, I have a couple of comments. First is, when I'm talking to you, I want to tell you that I really thank your staff. My mother was in the hospital for five days, passed away in June 16. You know, the care from the supervisor, the nursing supervisor, CNAs, RMs, everybody was unbelievable. Their compassion, their care and just everything that they did, I could not be happier with. They were, my mom was, it used to be called Part III, I don't know what the name is, but my mom was in Room 310. I cannot express enough thanks as to everything that they did do for her. Dr. Sherbo was excellent. You know, I would really like, I haven't had a chance to go up there yet, but I'd really like to let you know so you can at least thank them for me and look at things that I saw and, you know, one of their biggest things is just the compassion that I saw and most of probably anyone other, but, you know, the compassion they showed and the care, I really appreciate that. Things like this are easy, but you know what, seeing what they were doing and the care that they took did make it a little easier. So, I really want to extend that to them and thank them and I wanted to wait for this till I started reporting. I really appreciate that. The other thing is, I did get an email, I guess requesting that maybe your reports go to a regular meeting instead of the work session. I'm not sure if the Commissioners are aware of that, so, you know, I'm not sure how they feel with some of the decisions that I like for them, almost the decisions for them that I have reported. So, as soon as I get any type of input, if anybody has alcohol, let you know.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, first of all, let me extend my condolences for your loss. Thank you so much for sharing that and thank you for acknowledging your staff. Commissioner Billings, thank you so much for your kind words. It's been really the first time that I think this Commission has even mentioned the fact that we have such a tremendous swing in our finance and that is not one person doing that. That is a team of very, very qualified people with a distinct unified focus and that is to continue to be able to provide care for this community. I think that, you know, when we look at healthcare in our community, we have different types of deliveries. We have a QHCA, which is wonderful, does a great job. We have private practitioners who have done tremendous work in our community and we have this marvelous, marvelous entity called a hospital. And none of those are alike, they're all different and they all do wonderful things for this community. So, I appreciate your acknowledging us. I will share that with the staff because they will be delighted to have any type of positive recognition from this Commission. So, thank you very much.
First of all, I just want to thank you too for being on the board. Thank you for the updates, the emails that received that my retirement is busy and, but those emails pretty much answers some questions that I would always have and I really appreciate that and understanding that it takes a lot of time, it's only a year, as far as Board of Trustees and time it takes and all that. I really appreciate your hard work and the hard work of the Board of Trustees and thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just explain why we requested to go to the Thursday evening? It seems that there's a greater public attendance on the Thursday evenings and we want to make sure that all our information is getting out appropriately to our community and that just seems to be a more well-attended than you.
Thank you and thank you personally for having to support here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair. Chair. It's okay. I got an answer for Commissioner Billings on the roof. Yes, please. Okay. So, I spoke with Rob Schultes, who's one of the principal owners of the company. I walked out and asked him what their contingencies are. He said one of the main things that they do is obviously looking at the weather. They do a lot of roof replacements during this time of year, so they look at the weather daily, weekly. They try to plan accordingly. If they have an indication that the storms are going to come in at a certain time, they will address a size appropriate area on the roof that they can get removed and replaced prior to the happening. He said, however, as we all know, they do get caught sometimes off-guard, so they always have a contingency and mainly that's tarps. So, they've got the tarps ready to go if they have to to protect the area. He said, a lot of times, even with the storms that we get this time of year, they're still able to hold that roof on. So, they do have several contingencies in place and I just want to make sure I relay that to you before the meeting is over.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda review, July 1, 2019, we go to meeting agenda.
First, we need to hand over the board. I'm prepared to be made a proposal for the minutes, number five, 2019, for section four seven minutes, number seventeen, nineteen, regular meeting minutes. Agreed on agreements, consideration of agreement A, 1929, working financial plan, cooperative service agreement between Grant County and United States Department of Agriculture, animal and plant health inspection, also known as abbreviated ASIS. This agreement is coming back, it was on the last commission meeting. We're going to go ahead and fix it for your review. Again, it is the same agreement, nothing has been changed. We're going to renew the finding to approve that again.
Before we talk about that, I have a question about the agenda. No financial report? That will be on the second week. Okay. Still confused by that. That's what we don't know as much. So, going back to Agreement A, 1929, Commissioner Solis, I see, has brought this up. Tell us what you're.
Well, I did have a meeting with Brandon Jones. One of the reasons is that I completely didn't understand what an N44 was. I knew what trapping was, you know, but I did not understand what N44s, what they did, how they were used, how they were put up. So, we, I met with Brandon and I think he also met with Commissioner Brown and I got a really good explanation. One that I really liked was that he doesn't use traps. Since the only time he, the last 10 years, he hasn't used a trap at all. The only time he would consider using a trap is if there was dangerous animals close to a populated area, you know, school or meeting place or something like that, but he hadn't had the need. And he thoroughly explained to me what the N44s were, how they were used, how he uses them, and even when he uses them, the limited use. And he is quite the professional. Anytime that he's going to be putting things out, you know, he gets permissions, he makes sure that there's nothing on private land, not close to homes, clearly marking, showed us the markers and everything that he used. Plus, the other consideration I have was that if we don't, we would be in jeopardy of losing his services altogether. So, sometimes you take some of the wisdom in the back. So, I want to just reconsider what we put out there because I don't know if we would be able to amend the agreement with the Department of Agriculture. So, that's why I want to put it out for discussion, so let's see what we do there. So that's why I want to put it out for discussion, so let's see what we do there.
So I have a question. Harry, are you listening to this?
I am. I was just getting ready to ask the chair if I could make a statement about that now, if you have time.
So...
Yeah, hold on, a minute, no, two minutes, Brown.
The reason I ask if you were there is because, is it my, am I correct in the calling that you will not be able to call in for the Thursday meeting?
It seems unlikely. I will be on a ferry and a bus on Thursday most of the morning. So I will do my best to call in at times when I can hear, but I think there'll be too much noise for much of the morning for me.
Okay.
But Alicia, or Commissioner Edwards, I don't think that the math requires my participation on Thursdays. If Commissioner Solis has changed his position, then there will be three votes to approve the contract without the amendment, whether I'm present or not. And if he has not, there will only be two votes and there will not be a majority.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
You know, Commissioner Brown, and just to let you know, I think some of the discussion that I've had with our county manager, I thought that this item was going to be placed on the agenda for the second regular meeting, but I'm not too sure about that now. So, I mean, maybe we can discuss that a little further.
I have a lot of trouble by the fact it's been placed on Thursday's meeting. You know, we need to make decisions and move on. I thought we had with this item, but if it's coming back, then I want to deal with it as soon as we can, one way or the other. We need to either say yes, we're doing it, or no, we're not doing it. And that, you know, that's better than being in limbo. So I welcome it being discussed on Thursday. And my one comment that I wanted to make was that if Commissioner Solis has changed his mind because he's convinced that using M forty-fours is a responsible practice, then that's fine, that's up to him to decide based on further information he gathered. If however, we are changing our position because the federal government is refusing to respect our decision, then that makes me kind of angry. We have the right to determine what happens in our county and the federal government needs to respect our economy to do this. They are acting, in my mind, a little bit like kindergartners who when the sandbox plane doesn't go the way they want, take their tools and leave instead of cooperating with the people who are there. I don't think we should give in to that kind of heavy-handed tactic unless, like I say, unless Commissioner Solis changes mind and all people have the right to do that. I never thought the M forty-fours were hugely dangerous explosives or anything like that. I think and I continue to think that they are indiscriminate killers of wildlife and that that is not something I want to support with public funding. That's my position before, it's my position now and I'm hopeful that Mr. Solis still sees things that way, but if he doesn't, so be it.
Is that it, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, that's it for now. Unless there are any questions or anything, thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, that's part of the reason is I know that you have input, I'm just trying to make sure that you did, you tried to put in your position on that and just trying to be further in the process here, so I appreciate your comments.
I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. I appreciate Mr. Brown's willingness to expedite this. I was aware that Mr. Jones, that Grant County's not currently receiving services and Mr. Jones, I was going to meet with him too and it actually did end up meeting with him, but during that process, I was on a telephone conversation with him and he was actually working on a day off. He took a day off so he could provide the services that he normally provides out of pay relative to the M forty-four placement during my meeting with him, but we can have more discussion about this on Thursday, but in fact, I'll just wait, wait for Thursday for that discussion.
Any further discussion?
Well, my additional comment would be that we've had no contact from Department of Agriculture or Department of negative, so I don't think this is going to be driven by, you know, them holding an axe over our head or whatever, because as far as I know, you know, we haven't had any communications by then. Even in asking Mr. Jones, he says that, no, you know, the only thing he knows is there's not an agreement that's approved and signed, so that there's no services. So I welcome the chance on Thursday to discuss this and if I've made a change, then give my rationale for it, because I've had a lot of contact both ways, both ways, you know, and this is again, every decision that we make, you know, it affects somebody, so we don't make them lightly and unadroit.
Look, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to follow up on Commissioner Solis's comments by saying that I did attend the meeting with Mr. Brown and Mr. Jones and it's my recollection that we were told in that meeting that Wildlife Services, the USDA, had said that they would refuse to sign the contract as a mandate. And so I think Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown's comments about the federal government are valid based on information that we got in that meeting, just for the record.
Also, I believe that, and I'm not going to speak to it, I wasn't part of that conversation, but I believe that they have reached out to our county manager and she's had conversations about that too, so yeah, we can go, we can discuss that further in the third. Any other comments, sir? Thank you. Mr. Brown, can you make noise, everyone's in the hall? So I don't want you still there.
Sure. Every ten minutes, you want me to just say aye?
Ten minutes, just say aye.
Next, on these end is a consideration of agreement number eight nineteen thirty-five, an agreement for the provision of animal control services in the unincorporated portions of Grant County in Mexico. This is an annual renewal that we receive every year, this is included in our budget. If you have Heidi here, she wants to come up and if you have any questions, I'll call you.
You know what, I do miss a lot, a couple of questions, Chair. While it's been a couple of weeks ago, I had a citizen contact me, but I believe it was a stray cat or dog, I'm not sure on the report, and I mean, I've been reading this agreement and looking at it, but I guess my question would be, when they, when she had contact with, with somebody from the community society or the animal control, was they had told her that it would be, that she would be charged a forty dollar fee for a trap to do that? Can that be explained to them, maybe?
Well, I'm not familiar with this specific conversation. If she wanted the animal to be picked up, of course, there's no charge for that. We do rent out live, have a heart traps, for instance, for feral cats and they charge a forty dollar deposit, which you get back when you return the trap and we do charge ten dollars for candidates to use the trap and if you trap the animal, you just bring the trap and the animal in and there's no charge for that.
Because I believe this was just a stray animal and I did contact the Grant County Sheriff's Department, they went out there and I'm assuming took care of the situation for us. So that was my question as far as, you know, if somebody has a stray in their yard or their property, if, you know, they're being charged forty dollars to...
No, that's incorrect.
That's incorrect.
If they have a stray in their possession or if they have it fenced in and we can just come pick it up, there's no charge for that. If it is running at large, we make an attempt to capture the animal, sometimes that doesn't always happen, but in the way that they're charged. The only time they're charged is if they rent a have a heart trap, which like I said, is generally to catch ferrets that we can't catch.
And the other question, as I said, I've been trying to read some of this, you know, I need some knowledge, I need some knowledge on this, is what are the after hours, how are those handled?
There is no after hours. We've been talking with my friends from the Sheriff's Department about possibly looking into after hours for emergency calls only. That's still out there, but we provide, based on our contract, we provide forty dollars to animal control services and that is Tuesday through Saturday. In the past, the town of Silver City Animal Control has helped us out as we've helped them out because they only provide animal control services Monday to Friday, but there is no after hours animal control.
Okay, that might have been important on Thursday, but thank you. Any other questions?
So can we talk a little bit more about feral cats?
Sure.
There is a serious feral cat problem in my neighborhood and, you know, one trapping one animal isn't going to deal with it. You know, there's probably fifty of them, you know, in a one block area. How do you deal with that? Maybe it's a sanitary problem, it's a real problem.
The feral cat population is a very serious problem and if you would like for us to come set a trap on your property, we can go ahead and do that. It will basically be trapping one or two cats at a time. That's the only way we can around them, feral cats are not easy to capture, especially if they've been trapped in the past, if somebody trapped them and spayed or neutered them and then re-released them, we'll probably never catch them in a trap again. If you want to come, like I said, you can come rent a trap on your own and trap them on your own or as I said, we can come set up a trap on your property. It has to be on your property, but we cannot set it up on someone else's property without their permission and we cannot set it up on public property.
So if the focus of the problem, if the primary focus of the problem is not in my yard, then I can trap the ones that come to my yard, but there's no way for me to deal with the problem at the focus that's not my yard. Is that what you said?
Correct. If it's on somebody else's property, if they give us permission to trap there, we can. And I would have to look into if it's county-owned property, if we can get permission from the county, then we could probably trap that way, but I'd have to look into that.
Is there, so you haven't said this, but I'm hearing it between lines, there's nothing else to be done about the feral cat problem?
I don't know, I don't know what else there would be. I mean, the feral cat problem is way too many cats breeding and creating their own colonies. There are a lot of issues both in the town of Silver City and in Grant County where people illegally feed them without providing proper care and without containment on their property. Sometimes the cats are not feral, sometimes they may be your neighbor's cat and they're in violation of the ordinance by allowing their cats to roam off of their property. I don't know what other solutions there are, there's been a lot of talk about the trap neutralization program, the TNR. Our ordinance does not allow for that and personally and the human society are not in favor of it, as well as PETA, interestingly enough, is not in favor of the trap neutralization. So I don't know how else you would control cat populations.
Next, Chair.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item resolutions. Consideration of resolution number R nineteen forty-seven. This is a resolution authorizing execution and delivery of Cloys Infrastructure Project Fund. This is among the New Mexico Cloys Infrastructure Board and the New Mexico Finance Authority. This is for the benefit of Tyro and the total amount of nine hundred and twenty thousand. The purpose of the financing with the cost is for the construction of the AA compliant sidewalks in Tyro. Have any, she here? Have any questions?
I have extended the about this process, but if you have any questions, if you want to ask.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Under the Grant County Health Care Plans Form, we have consideration of May two thousand and nineteen health claims in the amount of two thousand two hundred and sixty-six twenty-five. Consideration of June two thousand and nineteen health claims in the amount of five hundred and fifty-five sixty-four. Commissioner's reports. We're whether executive session in accordance with NSA nineteen seventy-eight ten dash fifteen dash one eight. We have three items Abby has placed on the agenda, pending or current litigation regarding opioid litigation pursuant to NSA nineteen seventy-eight ten dash fifteen dash eight seven. Pending or current litigation regarding two thousand and sixteen Sheriff's Office pursuant to NSA nineteen seventy-eight ten dash fifteen dash eight seven. And pending or current litigation regarding two thousand and nineteen Detention Center pursuant to NSA nineteen seventy-eight ten dash fifteen dash one eight seven. And I believe I need to make a correction. That's all I have.
Thank you, appreciate it.
What's the question? I'd like to just tell those two.
Moving on, I guess. So next item on the agenda would be Commissioner's reports. Commissioner Brown, do you have any?
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Want you to add one?
Yes. So I would also like to thank Mike Carlos for his service to the Grant County, or for the Hiller Regional Board of Trustees. It is, I know it has been a very rocky ride and I do very much appreciate the time and energy that you spent in stepping up to the place of chair of the board. I also would like to thank everyone else who serves on that board and as well, thank the people who applied. I don't think there's any doubt in anybody's mind what the incredible level of commitment is to serving on that board and so the fact that we had eleven highly qualified candidates actually take that on, knowing what the commitment was, I think says a lot about this community. Thank you, Mike, very much.
Commissioner Billings? I'd like to just talk briefly, so we're on the same page, about what the next steps are in the board of trustee appointment process. I'm guessing, Bernadette, you'll think, you'll send notice to the ones who weren't selected and notice to the seven finalists and thanks them, appreciate it. And then the meeting scheduled for July eighteenth at six P.M., that'll be here, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Where we'll have seven candidates and I think the processes are going to speak. Five minutes each, is that right?
Ten minutes, right. Was it ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, five questions?
Ten minutes, five questions and I think they need to...
Anything else I want to say?
Yes. Okay. And then on the Thursday, July twenty-fifth, regular meeting, nine A.M., the final three will be selected.
Commissioner Billings, would you remind me, public input on the eighteenth is going to be prior to the candidates speaking or after? Remember what we decided on that?
What did we decide?
What did we decide?
I think prior, I think it was prior.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Well, I also want to, you know, take this time to thank Mike. His high level of dedication and commitment, plus the expertise. And not only that, I think he brought a lot of credibility to the board, you know, because of the service, his public service already. And it was always a pleasure to talk to him. And, and so knowledgeable about, you know, the general scope of everything there. So I hope, you know, now you can talk Tony into doing the same thing, you know, because, again, it's not an easy task. I did want to make some comments on the USDA contract on wildlife, but I think I'll, I'll hold them for Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. My, I have really nothing important comment to rebook in record on the regular meeting. So that's quite an accomplishment. I'll thank you all. I entertain the motion if Lemon has anything else.
We can't extend this to another area? I'll move it here.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?